All right, this is about nine sixteen AM on the twelfth day of June, Monday morning. We'll bring a special session of Somerville County Commissioners' Court to order. Let the record show Jeff Harris, Richard Tellever, Danny Chambers, Tammy Ray, and Wade Bush are all present. On item number one, discuss take action pertaining to consideration of tax abatement agreement with Yellow Viking Development One Limited Liability Corporation. Let's go over right quick. We'll have Michael Klein do opening remarks. Scott Deathridge, their attorney, will do the statement on tax abatement. And I apologize, I'm gonna screw up your last name.
That's okay.
Doug Hagemeier. Doug Hagemeier will do the environmental considerations. Leah Holton will do the technology and safety. Then Michael Klein will close on that part. Then commissioners, if you have questions, we'll go from there. Chamber of Commerce will make a statement. Sundance Landor will make a statement. Any citizens that would like to ask questions, talk. Hey, there you are. How you doing, man? Sorry that we had this going on this morning. Hopefully, sorry about that. Hang on. And then any questions that the public has, any comments they'd like to make, they can make. And go back and forth on any discussions or questions or issues. I have alerted Michael to a lot of things you brought to me the other day about the lithium batteries, the bald eagle, the lawsuit. I forget what all I sent your direction. But anyhow, Michael, if you want to step up here to the microphone.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you'll make sure the red button is on so we get you on recording in case anybody questions it. Oh, and one other thing, we did post this on the tenth day of May. Had to post it thirty days in advance, and we did. So fire away, Michael.
Before we get started, all right, Judge Chambers, I'd like to just end out kind of lay out for the commissioners of that department. So this gives you very similar layout to the previously solved. Exactly know the areas that are. Okay, thank you, Judge Chambers. Good morning, Judge Chambers and Somerville County Commissioners. Thank you for your time and attention today. I am Michael Klein, P.E., E.E. North America's Head of Project Development. I'm here today to support the Yellow Viking One Extension Tax Abatement, which will benefit Somerville County in many ways. To give you some of my background, I've been a resident of Texas for over thirteen years. I attended Southern Methodist University and obtained a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state of Texas. I've been involved with renewable energy projects across the country for most of my career. Since two thousand fifteen, I have helped developed, engineer, build, and operate over four gigawatts of assets across the United States in various roles. E.E. North America is an Austin-based renewable energy and power-to-X development company. Our parent company is located in Copenhagen, Denmark. Osaka Gas USA is a Houston-based company that develops energy resources and assets across the United States. Osaka Gas USA's operations also include acquiring, developing, and exploiting oil and natural gas properties, natural gas power plants, and LNG import and regasification. Osaka Japan's parent company is based in Japan. With me today, I have industry experts to testify regarding the project and the work that we have been doing to ensure the project creates jobs, boosts the local economy, helps the county finances, and contributes to a cleaner and greener future in Somerville County. With me today, I have Scott Deathridge, an attorney in Texas with over thirty years of experience. His career has been focused on environmental, energy, and water projects across the state. Scott will discuss how the project will affect the local economy and help protect county finances. Also with me today is Douglas Hagemeier. Doug has over thirty years of experience with helping industry and governmental clients in environmental consulting. Mr. Hagemeier has expertise on environmental impact studies, wetland surveys, and endangered species. Doug will speak on the environmental due diligence that has been performed for the project and how we will continue to monitor and be proactive in protecting the environment during the project's construction. Finally, Leah Holton, P.E., is with us today to discuss the project's technical aspects. Leah is an experienced professional mechanical engineer with expertise in solar and energy storage projects. Leah will speak on the technical codes and standards that will ensure the project is safe for not only the workers in the facility, but the public at large. She will also discuss the safety and quality assurance of photovoltaic modules. First, I would like to explain what a utility-scale solar project is. A utility-scale solar project is a large solar project that produces electricity for the utility grid. From the grid, it is then distributed to the end consumer. These projects use photovoltaics, which is also known as PV, to convert sunlight into electricity. Some in the audience today will refer to our facility as a solar farm. Our project is not a farm. It is an industrial power generation facility that is more environmentally friendly than other types of power generation in the area, especially near Somerville County. We develop, design, and operate a facility like this to an industrial standard regarding environmental compliance and safety. With that standard, we have a high bar from a regulatory compliance perspective. Additionally, the project will follow applicable laws and standards and regulations from regulatory agencies, including the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Texas Public Utility Commission, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, and the Texas Department of Transportation, just to name a few. We meet or exceed all regulatory requirements that a natural gas combined cycle or coal-fired power plant requires while not producing the harmful pollutants, including fine particulate matter, which is an air pollution that can lead to premature deaths in surrounding communities. Second, I would like to speak about the project and the financial impact on the county. A project of this magnitude has a huge economic impact on a community like Somerville County. The Yellow Viking One Project Extension plans to invest seventy-nine point four million dollars in Somerville County. This is in addition to the seventy million already scheduled to be invested in the original project area for Yellow Viking One. Based on our current cost estimates, this brings the total estimated investment to one hundred and forty-nine point four million dollars. As the Chamber of Commerce of Glen Rose will speak to later today, this investment will lead to additional economic activity in the community and long-term tax revenue to the county while not affecting the effective tax rate. It will help businesses like Cassidy and Rumel Grove, which could expand to support the influx of additional construction workers in the area with housing, not to mention the other grocery stores, restaurants, hair salons, gas stations, auto repair shops, and cleaning services that would receive additional business due to the construction and long-term operation of the facility. I want to speak quickly about the Chapter Three Twelve Tax Abatements and what they are. Scott will cover this topic in more detail, but a Chapter Three Twelve Tax Abatement does not cause a loss of revenue to Somerville County. Tax abatements are designed to be revenue neutral. The project may receive temporary local tax relief, but we will pay one hundred percent of our hospital, franchise sales, and other taxes. Additionally, the West Camp parcel will be converted from agricultural use to commercial land use, raising the effective property tax rate for that parcel. Third, I just want to quickly discuss some of the concerns that might be on the mind of the community. We have a lot of folks in the community here today, and we've heard your concerns loud and clear, and so I just want to quickly address some of them that our experts won't address later. So here's just three quick off the top. The Brazos River will be contaminated by stormwater at the project. This is false. We apply for the TCQ Construction General Permit, TXR one five zero zero zero, and implement a stormwater prevention plan during construction. This plan is designed by a licensed professional engineer and will prevent silt-laden storm runoff during the project's construction. Additionally, a licensed engineer will also prepare a permanent civil stormwater design to prevent soil erosion during typical storm events after construction. Two, the project will increase flood depths in flood local homes. Once again, this is false. The permanent civil stormwater design will not increase runoff into local tributaries. The project will be designed to applicable stormwater standards, and if the design of the project is to increase the runoff coefficient on the project site, the licensed professional engineer will design the stormwater infrastructure to not increase the runoff of the project into local tributaries. Finally, I just want to mention that the project will not be built in the hundred-year flood plain. Third, the project will disrupt the habitat of the bald and golden eagles. Once again, false. The project will adhere to the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act and its amendments, protecting bald eagles nesting and foraging areas. We conducted extensive surveys of our project site to assess the potential presence and extent of sensitive species that could be affected, including bald eagles nesting near the con plantation. We have engaged the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to follow all best practices and guidelines. Following the National Bald Eagle Management Guidelines, we plan to implement their recommendations to protect known bald eagle foraging areas and nesting sites should any be established within six hundred and sixty feet of the Yellow Viking One project area. And like I said, Doug will go into some more detail in his presentation. I have a few more here, but I just also want to address the email that you all received on Friday about the lawsuit between Yellow Viking Development One and the three natural gas operators out on West Camp parcel. When we purchased that parcel, those gas operators did not remediate the sites that they were operating on. We initially negotiated with those companies to try to remediate the environmental damage they did to the West Camp parcel. They would not comply, and so we had to end up going to a lawsuit, settling that lawsuit with them to remediate their work. They have gone and performed the remediation work on that land to make that site more environmentally clean than it's ever been in the last twenty-five to thirty years. As you can see, and as our experts will testify more to, our project is designed to balance environmental protection with the energy demands of the region, state, and country. E.E. North America and our partners in Osaka Gas USA are committed to developing, building, and operating projects that will benefit all stakeholders in the community. Finally, I'd like to update the commissioners and the general public on the status of the project's second phase. The project's first phase and the extension, Yellow Viking One Extension, is only up for consideration in the court today. However, updating the commissioners and the community on Yellow Viking Two is worthwhile in this forum. For context, the project's second phase is located on the Z Bar in Hill Estate in Hood County. Based on the community feedback and working with the commissioners in Hood County and Somerville Counties, we have decided not to build the project on the most northern portions of Abby's Bend. In the areas where we would build the second phase, the project would not be within the view shadow of the con plantation due to existing trees, terrain, and other foliage. I would especially like to thank Judge Chambers and the other commissioners in the court today for their proactive efforts to help us reach this decision. Each of you has been a partner in helping our organization's decision not to build in the most northern areas of Abby's Bend, even though it is not within your county. As you can see, supporting this vote is a vote for creating jobs, boosting the local economy, helping the county finances, and contributing to a cleaner and greener future in Somerville County. E.E. North America and Osaka Gas are long-term partners with Somerville County. We look forward to a fruitful partnership between us and the community, and this vote is a step in that direction. I appreciate your consideration.
Scott, you up?
Yes. Thank you, Judge Chambers and county commissioners. I've had the pleasure of coming out to Glen Rose, getting out of Dallas, seeing the country, and this has been a great pleasure of working with the county. It's always helpful and enjoyable to bring industrial developments for the rural areas in the state. Solar projects are one of those key economic development tools we have in the state. It's a very sunny state, lots of solar energy can be produced, and always like to come out. I grew up outside of Oklahoma City in the farming area, so I always liked to get out in the country. But my address today is really gonna focus on the tax abatement itself. As Michael said, this extension, which is a second phase of another extension that the county voted on a few years ago, is about seventy-nine point four million dollars. With the original project, it equals about one hundred and forty-nine, one hundred and fifty million dollars, which is never a minor investment in a county, and we hope you all will appreciate that. One of the key things about solar tax abatements, and people don't always think about it or look at it, but having been in the business of the practice of law for thirty-six years and worked on, you know, everything from refineries to chemical plants, natural gas-fired power plants, to wind and solar, and also worked on a lot of factories that have been expanded or developed, oftentimes when a party comes to a county and says, hey, I need a tax abatement, they're also looking for something else, which is solar farm, and what we're not looking for, and that is, we need ten million dollars for the roads, we need ten million dollars for the water line, we need ten million dollars for the sewage extension. So oftentimes, to get a factory to come into your community, you have to spend anywhere from ten to thirty million dollars or more. We're not asking for that. We're not asking for any roads to be built. We're not asking for any water lines to be constructed. We're not asking any investment from the community into what Yellow Viking is going to build, and so it's not a net investment of the county, and so we're avoiding all that investment. And so sometimes when people think about tax abatements, they think, oh, we're losing all this money, but really a tax abatement is a process to reduce the taxes for a short period of time, but to get all that investment. So we're looking at a six-year tax abatement versus a ten-year tax abatement, which is statute, Section Three Twelve allows up to a ten-year abatement, but working with Judge Chambers and some of the county commissioners, we decided we would phase that back and only ask for a six-year abatement. The other thing you have to think about is this land is really agriculture in its current state, which, as you know, because farm is not necessarily the most, grazing is not the most profitable business, the state provides for an agricultural exemption, which greatly lowers the tax value, the taxes that are paid for this land, but we're converting it into sort of an industrial power use, and so that agricultural exemption goes away, and so obviously our landowners that we work with when we're doing these projects don't want to pay those rollback taxes and penalties or interest, and so we will be paying those rollback taxes, our first payment, to the county, because when you transition from agricultural use to an industrial use, you have to pay some of those taxes that were incurred in the prior years, which was agricultural, you have to pay those back to the county. So we'll be making those payments on behalf of the landowner. And the abatement helps to ensure a project gets built. Solar projects all across the state get tax abatements. Texas is an amazing energy state. Our grid under ERCOT, though we've had some recent problems, is known around the world as the best grid in terms of deregulation and having market prices, and so what that does is drives down the price of wholesale electricity, which is good for all of us. It allows us to build factories, refineries, and other things around the state. But because it's a highly competitive environment, solar farms, and natural gas plants, et cetera, other power plants are getting tax abatements, and so in order for us to compete with this project, we need a tax abatement as well. It's just like a real estate project, a power plant, a solar farm, you know, every percentage counts, because you're competing for power across the state. The tax abatement leads to other things. We may have hundreds of workers working on this project during construction, and so as Michael mentioned, there will be people eating at restaurants, going to stores, staying in hotels, so, you know, we're bringing this additional economic development to the county. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this point. I know Bruce is here, is the attorney for the county and can advise the county, but this is an investment in the county that doesn't require any investment by the county into the solar project, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to bring this project to bear and be constructed. And, you know, we think as time goes on, counties, I know you have the nuclear plant, but we don't know how long that's gonna be available.
We hope a long time.
Hopefully a long time.
They're standing in the room today. Yeah.
Well, we hope they're around a long time, too, but we want to be part of that same power generation tax base that the power plant has been for so many years. That's all I have, but happy to answer any questions.
You don't have any questions at all at this time?
How long do you expect the construction to take to last?
I can take that answer, Judge Harris. I'd say anywhere between twenty-four and thirty-six months.
Couple or three years?
Yeah.
Two to three years, okay. And after that, how many people are employed roughly?
Roughly about ten.
All right, Scott, thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Doug, I guess you're next.
So I have to say that it's a wonderful thing driving into town this morning. This is kind of like coming home, because as a kid, I used to go to Glen Lake many, many summers, and then, of course, my dad actually was pastor here in First United Methodist for a couple of years, and when I got out of the military, I came back here. So it was like, I have lots of roots here, and I really have lots of roots in this part of the country. It's just an absolutely beautiful place to live. The thing about environmental in Texas is that we have a lot of species, a lot of different types of terrain and environment, and so when we go out and assess a property, in this case, this piece of land for Yellow Viking, we're looking at a lot of different things. We're looking at habitat, we're looking at water, we're looking at how the terrain sits in the environment. What is my setting? Where does the water land and where does it go? We're interested in what species the plants are present, and that's not just because we like to, you know, be able to name a lot of different plants. What we're trying to understand is what is the habitat that's here and what animals and plants are important to be here. We find that there's a lot of plants in our state that are not really where they're supposed to be, but that's kind of the nature of things these days. So I'm gonna touch on a few of the key concerns, I think, that we've been hearing, and maybe try to put some perspective on them. So the first concern, of course, was bald and golden eagles, and so these very, very large predator birds are, of course, the national, the bald eagle being a national bird, are protected under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. There are some very strict rules about this. They're no longer endangered, but they are a protected species, and so the reason that we have to pay attention to them a little differently than a threatened and endangered species, interestingly, is that there literally are protections for nest and habitat. So in February and March, we went out and surveyed these tracks of land to very specifically look for bald eagles and bald eagle nests. These are very large nests. They're usually at the tops of very large trees, like over seventy feet typically. These birds like to be at the top, right? They want to be able to see a large area. So in terms of Yellow Viking One, there is no bald eagle nest and no eagles on that property during those surveys. At this point, we still haven't seen any nest building over there, and part of the reason is simple. The project area itself is not on the river, because it's set back from the river. The largest trees and the trees that bald eagles like are on the river, right? So it's the simplest possible equation. The reality is that there are bald eagles in the area, in part because there's a very large reservoir nearest, and they love big bodies of water. So there is a nest on the river, just across from the con plantation, on the north track that Michael just mentioned. We're not developing. That nest is probably two thousand feet north of this proposed project, so it's not gonna be impacted by the project, and it's not just able to have any effect on the birds in that nest. And then while we were out surveying, we did notice another nest further north and west, not on any of the tracks of any of the projects, but also somewhat close to the con plantation. We don't know if that nest was occupied, if it was private property, and we couldn't go assess that. But you can see them, they're really big, so the reality is, no birds on the project area. They will fly over it, and they may well land. That's what birds do, right? They're migratory, they move around to forage. The foraging habitat for bald and golden eagles is, in fact, large bodies of water, so they may fly over the river to a certain extent, but mostly they fly groundery. So I think the other side of this is just, we always try to check. There aren't federal listings of things called habitat or critical habitat. There are no listings of federal critical habitat anywhere on the project or in the tributaries. Additionally, we also assess for all the listed endangered or threatened species that were identified for this county and for Hood County. Amongst those, there are some additional birds, the piping plover, the retinot, are both actually migratory species that prefer the Gulf Coast, but they're listed by Fish and Wildlife as a species that will fly over and potentially land in route to their wintering grounds. They don't typically develop nest or habitat here, but they may pass through the area. They are also identified as a bird by Fish and Wildlife that basically says, if you're not a wind project, we're not particularly concerned. It's just unlikely that we're gonna have an effect on... You know, Fish and Wildlife also has made a point that we need to assess the value of the habitat and how it functions, and so when you look at the habitat here, we find that a large amount of it has been previously disturbed due to sand and gravel extraction in addition to low gas activity, and so what happens when that happens is that the trees go away, and so we have a very fragmented piece of ground that has had a lot of extraction minerals, if you will, mostly sand, and has kind of eliminated a lot of the potential habitat for this migratory species. So on top of everything else, we really have something that is a mix of, and it has become kind of a range slash, you know, ag use, but it's not the best. There are areas of it that aren't hugely valuable in terms of growing plants, and so there's actually some huge value in potentially reusing it in a more sustainable fashion. The additional species that were identified, one is the Goldache corvus. The Goldache corvus is a species that is very, very particular about its habitat, and so it usually needs a very mature ash juniper and oak or hardwood mixed growth forest, and it needs to be mature enough so that they can actually strip bark off the ash juniper tree to build their nest. And so what we have on these tracks is something a little bit less than that, unfortunately. They're just not, the trees are either not mature enough or the mix is not good enough. In other words, it needs to be a mature canopy that kind of blocks the... These birds eat lots of cover, they're very shy, and they don't like to travel outside of the cover, and so they will come up the river and in those habitats that are adjacent to the river, but whenever they hit these large tracks of land that are fragmented by other development activity, those forests, of course, are all broken up, and so there is little connectivity between the patches, and so what we find is that it tends to be poor. We also have assessed known sighting information for the county and for the area around here, and so the reality is, the nearest known location actually is closer to Glen Rose than it is to the project site, but it's still, it's a challenge, right? These birds are usually, like I said, in undisturbed tracks of mature forest, and it has to have ash juniper, they won't even build their nest. So this is pretty far north for them. Most of them are south of here. Of course, we have plenty in the Hosted Area, but this track of land has a couple of patches we're gonna evaluate and continue to watch, just for all migratory species, you know, basically they're forested, and so that's the other aspect of what we address when we develop projects, is are there endangered species or threatened species, but also there are, of course, just migratory species. And migratory species are, in fact, protected in terms of, you know, we're not out there to take the birds or to take their habitat. So the best management practice, if you will, for developing projects like this is to make sure that we develop or clear anything we have to clear. We minimize what we clear, but we have to clear it. We clear it in the season when the birds are not present, and so that eliminates a huge amount of the risk of impacting a bird. The other item I wanted to mention was, the Hoopie Crane is also listed in the county. Again, we're in the flyway, so there's a two-hundred-mile-wide flyway that goes from basically Aransas on the coast way up north, and these birds are famous for flying great distances. We've seen movies and documentaries on that topic. The likelihood that these birds would stop here is remote, but if they did, it would probably be closer to the larger bodies of water. They prefer areas adjacent to large bodies of water to forage in, the shallow wetlands and those types of things. And so this track of land just literally does not have much of that. There's a few... There's a few isolated pools that were created when they restored from finding the sand and gravel, but they dry up rapidly and they're not supporting fish or wildlife, but a large bird would forage. So again, limited use, but it's a flying bird, so it could land. The thing that the developer also does with flying birds is, we recommend an implementation of a, what they call the Avian Protection Plan Guidelines. These are guidelines that were actually developed for wind about 15 years ago. They're hugely valuable to all energy generators because they also talk about transmission lines, right? So if there are some species that are affected by the potential for bird strike on a transmission line, then implementing these guidelines helps reduce that. And there's specific techniques that are used to make the lines more visible or to reduce potential for impact to the birds. So that's another element of what's going to happen. The next question I think we heard had to do with aquatic resources. And so aquatic resources on this site. Eighteen ephemeral streams, eight intermittent streams, three open water features, we have open water features, three ponds, some emergent wetlands and one forest wetland. These features have all been mapped, delineated, put on the development map that you have in front of you. And what happens is that the engineers look at it and go, well Doug said I couldn't go there. And they develop something called a buildable area. The buildable area doesn't go there, okay? And so the challenge here is, how much of the logic does it impact? They ask us very early to do these assessments and these delineations so that they can evaluate, in fact, is it worth it to build there? Is this too many natural features that we have to avoid? And so we provided them that information now several months ago. And the reality is that a large percentage of these features now may not be protected. And I want to credit Yellow Viking for not immediately changing course on it. On May 25th, the Supreme Court of the United States made a decision on SACUP versus EPA, which effectively rewrote the definition of waters in the U.S. And so it basically reversed the current administration's desire to regulate everything, including ephemeral streams. Ephemeral streams, just for everybody's edification, is something that runs when it rains, right? So typically don't see water in them. They're usually frequently considered ditches or just natural drainages. We have things we look for to help us identify those features that persist so that we can say that that is in fact a connection. Those definitions were highly developed by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And so when we go out and assess property for waters, we are looking for both the jurisdictional requirements so that our client developer is not developing it someplace that he shouldn't be protecting or he's getting the proper permits to do that. And when we talk about permits, which many developers spend a lot of money and time getting, that's not typical for solar. So solar projects, because they have such a small footprint and because they are so malleable in terms of how they site, frequently avoid most of the impacts. Ninety percent of the time, we're talking about something called a nationwide permit. That's a standard permit that just says, if your impact is less than a half acre, you can build it. And so most of the time, they're less than a tenth of an acre and usually it's just one access road with a culver. So we're not talking large impacts to waters in the U.S. It's just, that's the nature of an infrastructure project. You need to be able to get around on the property. You need to be able to build it. And so you have to, sometimes you have to put a culver over a creek. This property doesn't have a large number of creeks. And in fact, like I said, unfortunately now, you know, unfortunately from an environmentalist's point of view, now a lot of those creeks are not protected by the federal government. So I think the other piece of that is kind of important to mention. Because Yellow Viking is protecting those waters, they're also protecting the riparian zone. The riparian zone is that piece of ground right next to the water. And that, in fact, is where the biggest trees grow. So they're effectively protecting some of the very trees that might help support birds and other animals in this area. So the reality is, it's actually as good a combination as you can get. They're developing previously disturbed ground that's not growing much with solar panels to create a renewable energy source. And they're protecting features that might have value. It's not much more difficult than that. Lastly, there was a concern about water quality. And I think Mike pretty much nailed it. The state of Texas has adopted a program called the Texas Pollution Discharge Elimination System. It's just a reflection of the federal program. Both these programs are outgrants of Clean Water Act, Sections 401 and 402. 401 has to do with certifying that if you build a project and you need a Corps of Engineers permit, that you will comply with the water quality protection that is required to do that. And there's a list of BMP, their best management practices, to help do that. 402 has to do with stormwater discharge. And that's really what the state of Texas tends to regulate. Do we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan? Has an engineer designed it? Have we evaluated how that plan's going to function? And are we maintaining that plan during construction? And in fact, it is called a red line plan. That means they come up with the initial plan and then two weeks later, after it's on the ground and they're actually turning dirt, an engineer has to look at it and say, is it still appropriate? Is it still applicable? Do I need to fix it? Do I need to put a red line on this map or on this drawing to make sure I'm correcting it to address those water quality needs? So there's a lot of effort that goes into the process of protecting water quality just on the administrative side of this equation. Once you go to the field, you're installing sill fences, rock filter dams, sometimes permanent civil controls, like I mentioned. Really what we're looking at here is, you know, protecting those creeks and those drainages, right? And then the slopes above the braces on the southwest side. So the, you know, the project site in and up the south, I think, is generally about the same level of terrain. It's just that it falls off as you go away from the project. And so we don't want casual runoff from the project to go without control into a river or a creek. And that's what sill fences and rock filter dams are all about, right? We're going to reduce the velocity. We're going to capture any silt or sediment that we can and reduce the potential for pollution to the river. And that's essentially the best possible outcome. I mean, the reality is that unlikely that we're going to discharge because of the distance from the water. But if you add the sill fencing and the other controls, effectively you've managed to put a good control in place. So it's unlikely to produce much of any discharge. I'm a realist too. I know we get plenty of weather here. So, you know, we get some good downpours and it's going to push dirt around, right? And that's why those sill fences and those rock filter dams go into place prior to all that disturbance, right? We're building those fences.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions at all? Thank you, Doug. Ms. Holton, I believe you're next. Bear with us, Patrick. We will get there. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about the solar modules, the panels themselves and the technology and kind of just show you the safety, robustness and reliability standards that manufacturers have to adhere to for all products. So just for some context, to date, nearly 1.2 terawatts of solar have been installed globally. In 2022 alone, 231 gigawatts of solar were installed, which is roughly about 58 nuclear power plants, for context. In the U.S., 20 gigawatts, again, about five nuclear power plants, same size. Solar represented about 46% of new U.S. electric generation capacity in 2022. Solar modules today, they're basically a refined version of the design materials and reliability requirements that were initially developed back in 1975 through NASA's Jet Propulsion Lab Program. There are a large variety of solar module manufacturers these days, but they all use a very similar design, similar manufacturing processes and similar materials. In fact, most of the vendors that the manufacturers pull for their materials all come from the same place. They just get packaged in the manufacturer's facilities and put their stamp on them saying, this is this brand or this brand, but ultimately they're really all the same materials. At Yellow Viking, the modules that are being contemplated are crystalline silicon modules. So what this basically means is it's a silicon solar cell that gets screen printed with some metallization on top. Copper ribbons are then connecting each of the cells and that little stack gets adhered between two encapsulants of polyallatene elastomer. And those adhere to the front glass. And then these are bipacial modules that will also be a back glass. Biphasial modules basically allow light to enter from the front side and the back side. So you're giving it a lot more production than just a mono facial where you just have glass on the top. There's ultimately a junction box that also gets adhered to the back with the wires that get connected to each other. And they use silicon adhesive. So this design is really similar across all manufacturers, like I said. It's been what NASA used originally and so it's just kind of been improvements on the reliability and the robustness of the design and some small changes in number of cells, sizes of cells, sizes of things like that. But ultimately, the same concept and design hasn't changed that much since 1975. The industry's developed a long list of standardized tests that evaluate the robustness, the short-term durability and the safety of solar modules. To name a few, the International Electrotechno-技术 Commission, IEC, and Underwriters Laboratory, UL, are some standards that all manufacturers have to adhere to. And a third party has to come in and certify that they've passed these standards. The IEC includes standards that show modules able to withstand various stresses, both mechanical and environmental conditions. Some examples of these are thermal cycling tests, humidity freeze tests and a damp heat test. There are also electrical and mechanical tests that highlight any weaknesses in the modules. They do things like hail testing to show when a hail ball hits the module, how it will crack and how it will react. They also test for standards concerned with construction and testing methodologies to confirm that there's not going to be any personal injury for things like electric shock and fire hazards. UL also is a globally accepted standard that has a range of tests, again, including electrical, mechanical, environmental programs that assess the safety performance of solar modules. And like I said, all of these manufacturers have to get a third-party certification, which is publicly available. So there's a set of sort of basic standards that I just went over, but most manufacturers these days go beyond the standard set of tests. And they do sort of extended reliability tests, which generally consists of sort of longer variations of these tests or combinations of these tests, so you can kind of see the impacts of, you know, hail plus wind or all the other environmental considerations. They do, thermal cycling is when they basically take the modules to a very low temperature and then quickly raise it up to a very high temperature and they do it several thousands of times to understand the stresses that the modules will undergo. So these tests, again, are certified by an independent party, certification, testing facility. And then they're also reviewed by an independent engineer, like what my role is. Most manufacturers also provide warranties, performance warranties, that last 25 to 30 years to show that the modules will last that long. At the end of the life of the module, the modules will undergo EPA's toxicity toxicity characteristic leaching procedure, TCLP, which will then test the module to determine if it is classified as hazardous waste material. What they do is they basically take little broken pieces of the modules and they test those to see all of the materials inside the modules. In my experience, all contemporary solar modules, like the ones being considered for Yellow Viking, have passed this test and have not been classified as hazardous waste materials. In addition to sort of the review of equipment, like Doug and everyone's talked about, the solar project does go through various checks with licensed professional engineers of records where they review and stamp off on the electrical, the civil, the structural design of the buildings, the stormwater prevention plan, and make sure that the design, the technology, the environmental plans all adhere to applicable building and electric codes and environmental codes, such as the National Electric Code and the International Building Code. So I'd like to just conclude, again, just a small comparison for the operations of a solar project versus traditional fossil fuels and nuclear. And this is in terms of water use, which I know is another concern from the community. A solar power facility uses approximately 20 gallons of water per megawatt hour for things like module washings and soil dust control. For comparison, a coal-fired or nuclear power plant uses about 500 to 800 gallons per megawatt hour. So then also, a solar project does not emit anything into the air, like particulate matter and things like that. So I just wanted to put that into comparison. And I thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Holton. Appreciate it. Mike, you want to wrap it up on your end before we go to the public?
Kind of Judge, Commissioners, as you have heard today, our project is substantial benefit to not only the county, but the region as a whole. Somerville County's residents and taxpayers will benefit significantly from our project. Supporting this vote is a vote for creating jobs, diversifying the local economy, helping the county finances and contributing to a cleaner and greener future in Somerville County. I appreciate your consideration and our team is happy to take any of your questions. Thank you.
And I think there's someone from the chamber here to speak. And I apologize, I don't know you.
That's okay.
I would announce your name, but I don't know.
That's okay.
Apologies. Come on up.
I'm Kyle Spels. And so last...
Thank you, Mike, by the way. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So last week, we were made aware that this might, you know, that was going to be this meeting and might be an issue. And so several board members, other local business owners and various other members of the community actually kind of took a look at what this was, what it looked like and to really evaluate it. And so, so I don't go on too long. If you guys don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and read this, Commissioners' Court and to all the public that's here. "Thank you for your time. On behalf of the Glen Rose Chamber, today I would like to let you know that our support for the Yellow Viking One Extension Solar Farm, or that we support it. As a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm keenly aware of the potential benefits and investment of the magnitude of this project brings to Somerville County and neighboring areas. It is crucial to highlight that the Yellow Viking One Extension Project does not require any financial investment from the county, but would result in significant investment in the Somerville County. This presents a unique opportunity for Somerville County to expand its property tax base without incurring any financial burden. By attracting new businesses and developments, the county gains additional revenue through property taxes, which can be allocated towards various public services, infrastructure improvements and community initiatives. Expanding the tax base is a critical step towards ensuring the long-term economic growth and stability of Somerville County. The Yellow Viking One Extension Project offers an avenue to achieve that goal. By encouraging new businesses to establish themselves within the county, the project will diversify the local economy and generate an influx of job opportunities. During the construction phase, the project is expected to create hundreds of jobs, substantially boosting the county's workforce and income levels during this period and indirect benefits of hotels, restaurants and other goods and service providers. As a member of the Glen Rose County Chamber of Commerce, I've witnessed the positive impact of strategic economic in projects on the community. The Yellow Viking One Extension Project aligns with our vision of promoting growth, attracting investment and creating job opportunities in Somerville County. So I would like to ask that you please support the vital initiative and take steps to facilitate its realization. Thank you for your time and consideration. We can drive the economic prosperity of Somerville County and create a brighter future for all its residents." And I had a couple of people that really had wanted... And I had a couple people that really had wanted to be here today, about four or five other businesses that said, you know, hey, sorry, it's nine in the morning, it's Monday, and they're all in their businesses, running it, so building the community right now. So they did ask that we let you guys know that they had, had wanted to be here, but could not make it, and so, yeah, we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ma'am. Appreciate it. And I believe Sundance Landowner Dustin Massey, I don't know you either, so you're Dustin. How you doing?
Good morning. I wasn't even positive I was making mistakes this morning, but here we go.
Well, would you like to?
I don't have anything typed up, but I'm here on behalf of my grandfather, who's a majority owner of Sundance Ranch Joint Venture. My, I grew up in Hood County and Somerville County, running around on the river. Grandparents lived in Pecan on the river, and my other grandparents had their ranch across the river. So as you can imagine, I cared greatly about our ranch, and when Yellow Viking initially approached us, I think we probably had, you know, as, as many questions and concerns as anybody would, and pressed them pretty hard on those things. In my time growing up around here and seeing my, my late father and my grandfather deal with utility companies, oil and gas companies, fracking companies, water injection companies, environmentalists, everybody who's approached us because we have a ranch over there over the years, I'd say that Yellow Viking, Michael specifically, have been about the easiest people to deal with and trying to address our concerns and not pressure us in any way. It's been a pretty good relationship so far, and we're very confident in this project going forward, that they've addressed the things we're worried about, from environmental stuff to the viability of our land and be able to be farmed in the future when there's no longer a solar project, as well as the areas we call the pecan bottom along our river that we'd like to preserve and have them stay away from, and they've agreed to do so. Throughout the whole process, it's, it's been pretty good dealings with these guys, and, yeah, we've got our vote of confidence, and I'm not nervous, I'm freezing to death up here, and I should have my suit jacked, because Michael told me to.
I feel bad.
I do appreciate you guys and hearing everybody out, and, yeah, just want to give them our, our vote of confidence, that we've had a great relationship with them, and we'll continue to be tough on them going forward, and imagine that they will do the best they can to address any of our concerns and make sure that this is a good project for value long-term.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I know we have several folks here from Hood County on the other side today. Ms. Highsmith, would you want to say something, or?
Yes, yes, I think that Ms. Larson would like to get first.
Okay. All right. And I apologize, I may have seen your face, but I don't remember you, so.
That's okay.
As I told Judge Massengill, I typically don't need a microphone, so if I get real loud, just do this.
No problem.
Hood County was.
They do that to me all the time, so don't worry.
Oh, yeah, the judge does it all the time. My name is Trissy Larson. I am a resident of Pecan Plantation. We've lived there approximately eighteen months. We are on the other side of the Brazos River from the proposed Sowet Farm. So number one, I'd like to ask some clarification from Mr. D. Thredge. Under the Federal Information Act, I was sent a letter you wrote, Kristen McDonald at U.S. Fish and Wildlife on January ninth, 2023. To sum up the Golden Bald and Eagle Act, Kristen responded back to you that, well, you indicated that you had done field studies and Viking One was completed, you were going to be field studies on Viking Two. Kirsten, who is an energy biologist in the regional office, wrote, she said, responded indicating that the timing of their field studies were not the optimal time of year to detect nesting eagles, and recommended when they would be best done, and also indicated that this would be most productive if conducted across two years. I have since requested more documentation under FOAI, and it's my understanding from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, this is the only correspondence you've had with them. So to say you've engaged with Fish and Wildlife is totally wrong. I talk to these people once every two weeks. They are still waiting on Yellow Viking to reach out the olive branch to ensure all under the Golden Bald and Eagle Act is followed, and that's something you're responsible for, to get with those people and work with them under their requirements and guidelines. So you have led this court erroneously. You have not reached out at all.
We have a chance to rebut here in just a minute.
So, one of the areas that U.S. Fish and Wildlife believes they could step outside the bald and golden eagle, regulation and break the law is the foraging areas. They're very wide, they're very large, and these sightings of bald eagles that we have documented for Hood County and the Commissioners' Court and U.S. Fish and Wildlife shows those pairs might, you know, feed in very large areas. So this is an area where Yellow Viking could break the law and be penalized, because they would be affecting and impacting those feeding areas. And how do you govern or watch or monitor an eagle's foraging area until the eagles are gone? There's, the only resident that is the most cherished in Pecan Plantation, and you do have sightings in Somerville as well, is our bald eagle residents and their eaglets, and we have no intentions of losing them. So I think this has to be taken into consideration as well. So under the Federal Migratory Bird Act, they cannot disrupt their breeding behavior where they abandon their nests. And I'm going to use the red-tailed hawk as an example. They're very prolific throughout Somerville and Hood County, and so that means you're going to have a lot of migratory bird nests in these areas. How are you going to protect and not break the Migratory Bird Treaty Act? Also, I'm just curious to know, how are you going to do weed control in Yellow Viking One and Yellow Viking Two? I'm assuming you're not going to have hordes of people on golf carts physically pulling weeds. That means you're going to have to control with such pests or weed killers like Remy, which then ends up in the Brazos River, which then ends up in prey, or our birds, or our other species that drink or eat on prey that are infected. So that's another area I'd like to hear from. And the most disturbing is, we are documenting today and this week identification of golden cheek warblers approximately two miles south of Yellow Viking One. This will, these documentation will go to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and it will go to the Department of Interior. This gentleman has lived on this property for quite a long time, but it's been over the last seven years he's seen the yellow-cheek warbler, which is a dangerous species. So these sightings will go with the documentation up to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And then I wanted to also bring up, my husband was with UL for many, many years, and my husband worked consulting under ISO standards in the manufacturing environment. Considering where these solar panels are made, it's in China and Asia Pac, and I work for an A-MAN, an environmental health and safety software company, and we work with many chemical manufacturers here in the U.S. and many oil and gas companies such as Exxon, Chevron, BP, Total, et cetera. There are many regulations here in the U.S. that protect those workers that manufacture the solar panels here in the U.S. They're not so in Asia Pac. So, you know, I mean, my husband is still not sold with his thirty-some-odd years in quality management in the manufacturing environment, that we can say, you know, these are safe, they're not going to get damaged by hail, they're not going to catch on fire, they're not going to get blown away in a tornado. So anyway, I guess that's about all I have to say. Are there any questions of me?
Who would like to answer the first or second or third question there? And if y'all will, we'll keep it brief and concise, as you can see we have other people waiting on other things.
Very good. So Fish and Wildlife, first of all, myself and my entire team are all permitted biologists with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We hold three, probably not forty endangered species permits in the state, including the golden cheek warbler. We do active surveys for bald eagles all the time. Sure enough, you got to do it in the middle of the winter. Why? Because you can't see the top of that tree when there's leaves on it. It's a pretty simple kind of thing. So that's why we waited till February to go out and look for bald eagles. Simple as that. Fish and Wildlife, the very first thing they want to know is, have you done a survey? Have you got any data for me? We often have initial collaborations where we say, hey, this is what's happening, this is what's coming, but we want to have, we need to go get information, we need to go get data so that we can bring you information about our project and what those impacts are. So that's what we did. And so as we finalize development plans for this project, we can easily not go back to Fish and Wildlife and say, here's the data, and they'll be able to see exactly where the nests are relative to our project, and they'll, and they'll also be able to see that we're not within six hundred and sixty feet, which is the recommended setback distance for bald eagle nests for development. There is a requirement to coordinate directly with them when you develop near a nest. At this point, we have no nests near the project, and so we don't need to coordinate on that issue. We've also sent certified and permitted golden cheek warbler biologists to the field. They assessed this track, this piece of ground for potential habitat. No, no golden cheek warblers were observed, nor, nor were they really expected, as I explained earlier, we're a little bit outside of their preferred habitat. The other side of that equation is that, that they're effectively migratory, just like all the other birds that we're concerned about. Migratory birds go south in the winter, so when do we clear? In the winter. We don't clear when there are birds there, and we don't clear when there's nests, right? It's very simple. If we want to avoid impacting the bird, we avoid the bird, and that's pretty much the simplest way of approaching it. So there is no real concern about taking the species. As far as the potential for implied intent to take, we're not intending to take, we're trying to avoid, so we're not, we're not actually going to ever be in violation of Migratory Bird Treaty Act during construction, there's active monitoring for that. You do find a couple of species that will try to nest in the middle of a big piece of bare ground, you know, you have to watch for them. If that happens, you put, put them around them and let them finish nesting. But it doesn't happen too often. We move around a lot on these projects, so they're not typically going to settle there. And then I think the, the last element here is that there are a lot of ways to look at species impacts for these projects, if, as long as we're approaching it in a logical manner, we're scheduling the destruction in a concise way and managing it, we're going to minimize any potential to take.
And did anybody want to address the panels?
Can I address?
You bet.
I want to answer the questions on the weed control. So the solar modules, the lowest edge of the module is at least three feet off the ground, if not more, so that's the minimum. So these solar panels are actually pretty high off the ground. I'm not a tall person by any means, but I can walk straight under the modules. So they actually do use mowers and not weed control like Roundup, so they do, most operations and maintenance plans include several mowing events throughout the year to maintain vegetation and weed control as well. And then in terms of the UL testing, most of the third-party testing facilities are U.S.-based, so the big ones are PVA, which are based in Napa, California. There's one called CFB, which is based in New Mexico. And so these modules actually get shipped to the U.S., and the third-party testing facilities are in the U.S., and they're, they're based in the U.S., so the testing facilities are not at the manufacturers or in Asia-based countries. There are third-party companies there, but most of these manufacturers will get certifications from, from U.S.-based testing facilities. Just to address that.
Thank you. Anything else at all? Questions? Ms. Highsmith?
I have one question of this young lady.
You bet.
So have you given the, the judge and the commissioners the safety data sheet for the panels?
Yeah, do you have SDSs for those panels?
Well, the module has not been chosen yet for the project. We do not have safety data sheets for those modules. However, when we do get into construction and those modules do arrive at the construction site, they do come with that SDS, so that everyone on the project site and facility knows what's in those modules. Like we have said, these modules typically, if they do have anything that is a hazardous material, is at such a small limit that most of the time it's even kind of difficult to give SDSs, because it's a very, very low limit of any material that would be there. You know, we're not talking about big barrels of chemicals, huge tanks of SO gas or anything else, we're talking about a double laminated cell. And Leah, you can maybe talk a little bit more on the concentration, if you're using any hazardous material there, but it is so small that it risks the public or any one of the facility is.
Yeah. Yeah, so most of it comes from the copper ribbons or the silicon itself. The copper ribbons, for context, are millimeters in diameter, so they're, they're teeny tiny, very small ribbons that go on the modules. So like Michael said, the, the amount of even material that would have hazardous is such a small amount, the amount of hazardous material, the amount of material is even smaller, right? So.
Would you talk about the, the, what is inside of the PV panel? I'm not talking about the copper wiring, I'm talking about the other substances, the other metals that are, that are inside of the panels, yes, the heavy metals.
So, so to be clear, there's the junction box, which has the wires, which actually have the, the wires that connect to some of the other, other modules and other equipment. That's on the outside of the junction box. Within the solar module, there are solar cells that are made out of silicon wafers, so basically they take this big, sort of looks like a rod of silicon, and they use really thin diamond cutting to extract extremely thin pieces of the silicon wafer. They're about this big in diameter, and there's about seventy-two cells, or sometimes you're cutting half and making one hundred and forty-four, but they're cells that are about this big. Within those cells, they etch on metallization on top of those cells, and the, those cells are connected by those copper ribbons, which is what I was talking about. So it's actually a copper ribbon that connects the solar cells, and again, millimeters thick is what's actually inside the module, and then the modules are then encapsulated with the polyethylene encapsulant, and then the glass goes on top, and then there's a, a frame around it.
Where are these panels manufactured?
Right, so most of the manufacturers are in Asia-based countries, a lot in Vietnam, Thailand, China, but like I said, they procure their materials from vendors of those actual, so you get different glass vendors, you have different silicon cell wafer manufacturers, you have different vendors for the frame, the junction boxes, that are getting kind of all scattered over, but.
So outside of the U.S., when you look at that supply chain going into the panel, you, you don't know what materials they are using, because typically it won't be honestly disclosed, because they don't have the same safety laws and SDSs and process safety management regulations we have here. So when it gets to the U.S. and a third party does testing, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just not buying your argument.
So Ms. Larson, under the Force Labor Act of the United States, there is strict traceability requirements that go all the way down to the cell and the volatile materials in the modules. So the manufacturers we work with to comply with all the traceability under Force Labor Act and all the other U.S. statutes in regards to the material into the U.S. has to provide us third-party testing, traceability reports of all the material from the raw material all the way up to the finished project. And also for this project and the projects I typically work on, I work with a company called STS, they're a safety testing standard kind of like UL. They do that traceability work for us from the raw material all the way through the factory with individuals inside the factories, and to process that paperwork and to understand, is this real paperwork or not? You know, in my career, we've had modules that a manufacturer has tried to slip under us, and our third-party testings like STS said, no, you cannot ship this module, you don't have the right paperwork, you don't have the right importation, and you don't have the traceability of materials all the way down. So to say that we do not know what's going into those modules is just false.
I also want to add, there's the new Infrastructure Reduction Act, which is now incentivizing solar projects to have a certain percentage of U.S.-based materials, so things like the racking, as well as the modules, and so there are several manufacturers that are building U.S.-based manufacturing facilities now to be able to manufacture the same companies' modules just out of the U.S. instead of out of a factory in, in a China-based country or U.S.-based.
Back to the question of the heavy metals in these panels, can you speak to that, such as cadmium and the lead?
Yeah, so again, so the, the crystalline silicon modules that are being contemplated here just have the silicon wafer, and then the only other metallization is those copper ribbons and the metallization that goes onto the, the actual solar cells, and then wires. There's, there's no other metals other than this, they're free. Those are the only.
These are not PV?
These are PV.
They are PV?
Yep.
And how do they not have the heavy metal?
They have the silicon wafer, and again, the metallization on top to make the tiny ribbons, but they're millimeters of copper ribbons and the metallization on top of the cell.
The heavy metals are in solid cell.
Yeah, but. Yeah, but again, so silicon is the wafer, which is this big.
Definitely, yes.
They have, they have metalization on top, right? Again, talking about the cells, this thing.
So.
They have big metalization on top, very, very small amounts.
Are you leasing all this property or purchased any of it?
So we own the West Camp parcel, which used to use, uh, on, everything was rolling for a, a ranch. So we own that parcel under EE North America Land Holdings. That parcel will end up being leased to the project company, so we have a vested interest in the community long-term of owning that parcel. The additional land, which is part of the Sundance Ranch, that is the area that's being leased for the property. The area that you're under consideration for today for the extension is just the Sundance land in the very southern part that's in Somerville County.
And we'll bring it back to the court. The attorneys, correct me if I get any of this wrong, all right? Back in September twelve, twenty twenty-two is when we did the, I'm sorry, what are you doing with your question? I just jumped right in there. We established the reinvestment zone, which is what we're here today discussing, the reinvestment zone. And then as Scott can attest to, it took us how many months and years to get this abatement? First year, seventy-five percent, second year, seventy percent, third year, sixty-five percent, fourth year, sixty percent, fifth year, fifty-five percent, the sixth year, thirty percent, and the seventh year, it's a hundred percent. I mean, you get no tax abatement at all from the seventh year forward. And I think we figured, which is a lot of money to me in the grand scheme of things, at the end of ten years, back then, we were looking at a minimum of fourteen million being on the tax rolls because the eight percent you get from the state plus the additional you get from the counties, if Hood and Somerville give you anything. Is that right or is that wrong? Is that close?
I don't remember the exact numbers, but it's probably an empty summary.
All right. All right, so commissioners, what would y'all like to do here today? Would you like to move forward to this? Would you like to talk about it, think about it? You've heard all kinds of testimony on both sides here today. It's time for y'all to talk. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Highsmith.
Okay, thank you so much.
I thought we were ready for that. Hang on.
What was that button say?
That button says save the process.
There you go. Didn't say shoot the judge, really.
You know there's math. My name is Cindy Highsmith, and I want to thank the judge and thank the court for allowing me to speak today. So there's two things that I want to talk about today, and one is I'm confused. I saw the agenda item, and the agenda item said that the ownership was Yellow Viking One. So that confused me because, you know, when the project first came out, this was, the land was Yellow Viking Two, and it was owned by Sundance, yes. So I looked at the EE site, and I saw that on May sixteenth, they had put out a press release, and the press release, well, I'm going to read three press releases, and one is from Osaka Gas USA. And it says, Osaka Gas USA Corporation, one hundred percent subsidiary of Osaka Gas, has agreed to acquire one hundred percent ownership of a three hundred and fifty megawatt utility scale solar project in Texas from EE North America. Okay, that's from, it goes on, I'm just reading you up part of it. That's from Osaka. Well, then I looked at Renewable Energy News, and it says, European Energy offloads three hundred and fifty megawatt Texas solar. And this is May sixteenth, and it says, EE North America, a subsidiary of European Energy, has agreed to sell a three hundred and fifty megawatt utility scale solar project to, in Texas, to Osaka Gas USA Corporation. Okay? Then here's another press release, and they're quoting, and I'm going to miss this name up terrible, but it's Suno Yokomoto, President and CEO of OG USA. We're pleased to take over the development of this project from EE North America. So I am confused, confused. I want to know, so, and I think the residents of Somerville and Hood Counties have a right to know who is going to be the responsible party here. So is this owned by Yellow Viking, or did you sell this to Osaka Gas? I mean, what's going on here? Because if this is owned by Osaka Gas USA that has a terminal down in Easton for liquid natural gas, then why aren't they here? If they're one hundred percent ownership, then I don't understand why you guys are here and why this company isn't here to speak to this court and to speak to the people of Somerville and Hood County. So, you know, I looked back at some other projects that y'all have done, one over in Flukerville. So why are you shaking your head? It says that on your slide, okay, whatever. But anyway, it says, so they, what they do, but they sold it to D Energy. And then I looked at this project that y'all are supposed to have going over in Arizona at the same time you're going to have this project going on over here in Somerville County. And it says that now you've brought in a partner, Elyon Energy. So I just want to know, are y'all just flippers? Are y'all the set of men? And then, you know, then you need some money, so you go get these companies that are making money hand over fist, you know? And so what do we have here? You know, I think you guys need to tell the judge and the court, maybe you've done all this, but I think the, the public needs to understand what's going on here. So what's going on here? Mr. Deep Bridge, tell us what's going on here.
Scott, you, Michael, who wants to take that question?
I can take that. Ms. Highsmith, are you done with your questions?
No, I'm not done, but I'm done on that.
Why don't you just complete your question?
Well, okay, all right. Well, is that what you want, Judge? You want me to keep on going on a different issue or do you?
Well, we're going to wrap this up pretty quick, but yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, so then I, last night, you know, I looked at the ERCOT site and, you know, looked over at the PUC, and the only thing that y'all have filed was for a two, with ERCOT, is for a two hundred and eighty-five megawatt solar facility with no batteries. That's all the, so you haven't invested any money on anything else. So there, and there's nothing under Osaka Gas USA, you know, so then I looked over at the PUC site, because I know if you're going to put in a substation, before you ever break ground, you have to file that. And there's a lot to it, and you haven't invested money to do that. So it looks to me that you're trying to, you know, optimize, moneyize, whatever you want to say, before you put in any other money into this project. You want to see what you can get out of this court and what you can get out of Hood County Court, and then you're going to put some money into it, but hey, what's going on?
Is that all the questions?
On that, on that issue?
We'll let them ask.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Judge, would you like us to answer now, or would you like?
How many more questions you have?
Well, I'm going to talk about lithium batteries next, lithium ion batteries next.
And you don't have any lithium batteries out there at all, right?
Nope.
All right, so that might help that, that question.
Okay, so that's for Yellow Viking One. So we need to buy a Yellow Viking One and Yellow Viking Two, thirty, approximately thirty-seven hundred acres, you know, about five point nine square miles. And, you know, it just blows me away how an environmentalist can get up here and tell me that you take all that habitat, all that land, and you clear all that, and you're not going to affect any of the, I mean, y'all just, you talked about the birds, but, you know, I see what, what lives in the con plantation. We're a community, so we live nicely. You know, we don't take away the whole area, you know, some homes, but you come over there, we have a big deer herd in there, we have bukuns, migratory birds, I mean, you know, and you can't tell me that thirty-seven hundred acres, you know, with glass panels over it, that that's some kind of a habitat for wildlife. Or when, when's the batteries going to go? And so you say, no batteries now, but it doesn't make any sense to anybody that you're going to take all these panels and do thirty-seven hundred acres of this panel, so you're going to have, and this is where, you know, so you're going to have about six hundred and thirty megawatts of energy. So if you don't put some battery storage in there, it's just whoop-de-doo. I mean, it just goes at the end of the day. You know, if it's not bought that day, then, you know, it's gone. You're not storing the energy. So when, when are you going to put the batteries in?
All right, so I want to answer those questions, and we'll bring it back to the court and the court to decide what they're going to do here today. Thank you, Ms. Highsmith, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Judge, commissioners, I will try to keep it as brief as I possibly can. Osaka Gas USA has purchased the Yellow Viking One Development LLC. They have a hundred percent ownership of that project. It's very typical in our industry that there will be a large holding company like EE North America, and then we have subsidiary LLCs for each one of the projects for liability reasons. With that purchase, Osaka Gas has also signed up EE North America under a development service agreement through the construction of the entire project. So what a development service agreement basically does, helps us finish any development items that we're out withstanding, just like the tax abatement here today. And if there's any additional development items that are further on in later stages, closer to notice to proceed, Osaka Gas is taking the responsibility to complete those. That being said, myself and my team is going to be involved with this project through construction all the way through. It's not like we are just walking away from the community, especially when we own the West Camp parcel for Yellow Vikings One, we have every reason to be here. On the different sizings of the project, that's a very simple explanation. Projects of our size are sized in three different ways. One, megawatts AC at the PLI of the point of interconnect. Two, megawatts AC at the inverter. And three, megawatts DC. When you see press releases on a solar project, typically the developer will use the megawatt DC capacity, which is three hundred and forty-five megawatts DC for this project. At the interconnection, which Ms. Highsmith was referring to, our interconnect position is at two hundred and eighty-eight megawatts PC. The reason for that difference is that we have to overcome the inverter efficiency and have a higher DC capacity to power up the inverters, then power from the inverters all the way to the PLI. You also typically have a smaller PLI number than your inverter number so that you can maximize the generation through that PLI. Yellow Viking Development One is not planning to have batteries. If we were going to have batteries on this project, we would have to go through the interconnection process again with ERCOT and Encore, which we have currently been in agreement with, with Encore since, I believe, October of last year on our SGIA. For your information, SGIA is the interconnect application that you do through the Transmission Authority and with Encore. I did not want to bring this up, but I'll bring this up now because we were accused of not putting any investment into the substation. We have already put security deposits down with Encore for over four million dollars of investment for that substation that we specifically put in Somerville County per the court's direction last time we were here. So I, you know, I, I don't know if there's much more I can say, you know, Ms. Highsmith, if there's any other questions that you would like me to answer? Judge, I believe that's a no. Commissioners?
All right. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, court, back to y'all. What are you thinking? Are you thinking? Heard lots of testimony?
I've heard a lot. I've only heard a small portion. One lady from, from my community, I would like to hear more from my community of the, you know, I understand the con plantation, I understand the guy with the property and the people that want to build it, but I was, the statement that she may, I would like to hear more from our community about this.
Things like that?
Yes.
Yeah, our, our community didn't show up. Go ahead, Greg.
We are here.
Hey, we're right here. We're right here. My name's Craig Dodge, I'm a longtime resident, I live in the area where it's at. I guess one, the one question I got is, is just where's the water going to come from that you're talking about that you have to use on the project? Just one question that I have.
Yeah, I can address that. So typically for these projects, they end up drilling wells for the project. And so mostly for our West Camp parcel, where we own the water rights, that's where the water would come from with that parcel. And then on the Sundance parcel, most likely would enter a water use agreement with the Sundance Ranch for their water rights as well.
Go ahead, Ann. Do you mind, would you stay there, Michael? You might have a question you need to answer.
Um, when you were talking about the agricultural exemption that's been on the property?
Yes.
I believe, I believe that you, the Somerville County, can go back five years and collect those taxes. Are you paying the five years back?
Correct.
You're going to pay all the taxes back for five years?
Correct.
That's true.
Do you know how much water you're going to use for the project?
Uh, Leah, would you mind answering that?
She said twenty gallons or something. Go ahead.
Yeah, twenty, typically twenty gallons per megawatt, um, for operations, so that's for cleaning the modules, maintaining like the dust and, and other soiling, twenty gallons per megawatt.
So it's like three hundred and fifty megawatts, twenty times three hundred and fifty?
Right, so three hundred-ish, you said?
Yeah, correct.
Is that constant or every day, periodically or?
That is, that is per, so it's per, actually per megawatt per a single year, I believe. I have to check that. But again, comparing to Newbury, which was a five hundred to eight hundred gallons per megawatt.
Have y'all been in touch with Prairielands Groundwater Conservation District on permitting for water well use on, on this project?
So ICF has done all the permitting matrix for us on water wells and everything else. And so Doug and his team will engage with those folks to get those wells when we get closer to construction. Typically, the well permitting doesn't happen until you're roughly three to six months away from construction. And this project for West Camp and for Yellow Viking One, we've started initial survey staking and that type of construction work, but the full-blown construction work with civil grain and everything else isn't going to happen until the end of this year. So.
My only other question is that y'all are talking about a six-year abatement here, and I believe you said about fourteen million is kind of what we're looking at? Is that what you said?
Well, where it starts up, and these numbers have changed, that's what we was talking about, at the end of that ten years, that what go on the tax rolls back in the original?
When would the tax abatement start? Would it start when the project starts or after it's completed?
I believe it's the first day of production.
Well, after it's completed, then it will come to tax less.
Right.
And so it would be after, so we're looking about three years down the line when the abatement would start?
Yes.
A six-year abatement, so we're nine years down the line.
But they pay taxes during the time before the abatement goes in place?
Correct.
They pay taxes up until, but it's online and in production, then they start getting the abatement, but they still pay thirty percent minimum, and then at the end of six years, it goes a hundred percent on tax roll.
On tax roll. So then, but then we're only going to look at about ten permanent jobs is all we're going to be looking at?
Yes, yes, yes.
That would be my question there, is that we're going to do a six-year abatement for ten jobs?
Yeah.
So one of the questions that we asked that was kind of big was after that, the ten jobs doesn't sound great, but a lot of the trainings and things like that, that these people will be trained to do, so some of them will go on to travel and do other projects throughout. So half of the workforce will go, half of the workforce roughly would stay. We discussed that there would be plans for helping those people either start businesses, use those skills, different things that they learn during that time going on. Now, will they all stay here? Probably not, but oftentimes what we've heard and seen is that the families do kind of stay and that people may go and travel. So we'll still be keeping people here, employment dollars will still come back here, even though they may be working and traveling somewhere else. So that was a big question that we had. It's great that you get these temporary jobs, but how do you sustain that after? One of the other big questions that we had or that we looked at, from everything that we could tell, the, the place that where it's going doesn't require a significant amount of clearing. It's not requiring a lot of land that needs to have any sort of changes to it. So this land is already positioned to have this put down for the most part, so a lot of the environmental concerns. So a lot of the environmental concerns, that happened when, when they were, you know?
Sand mining.
Exactly. So, and from one other question we looked at is a lot of the questions about the sand mining and what they had to do to rehabilitate, what they had to do to look back into it. And that seems to be a big issue that doesn't get taken care of frequently, whereas from the solar side, from what we see. Now, again, we've only, you know, looked and asked the questions that we know about it. I am by no means a solar expert. Um, I've done a lot with oil and gas, I've done a lot with a bunch of other industries. But I can tell you that the questions that we had were actually answered before we had the questions. Meaning when we asked or when we said, hey, we want more information, before we're willing to say, yeah, we're, we're interested in this, they came and said, here are all the things you ought to be concerned about, here are this, and then what else is there? So we also requested certain specific infrastructure things we'd like to have looked at that do from what we, you know, we, and obviously they can't promise those, but I thought that was a big deal to come and say, hey, what does the county need? What does your city plan look like? What's the comprehensive plan look like? How do those two merge? So a lot of that was set down and discussed, how not only does it just start now, but going forward, how does it align with what the city, with the county and the rest of the plans have that we are looking at? So beyond just the initial impact, beyond just this surge, but what does it mean from a community perspective? And our big question too was that long-term partnership. We've had fantastic partners here in the county with, with the power plant, with all that. I mean, we couldn't have asked for bad partners. So that, they've had a high standard to live up to, and I think they understood that. And I think they came knowing that, knowing that from their perspective. So from when we had our meeting, now again, I can only know what I know. And, you know, getting into, to a lot of these things is not something I'm dug into a lot, but I'm a very big, like, what is the invisible cost? So I don't know if you guys are aware, but when electric cars first came out, they actually had a lot of people get hit in crosswalks that were blind, or that were deaf, because they couldn't hear the car coming. So those were unintended consequences. So electric cars had to go back and put sound into the car just enough so that people could hear them. And that's where I feel like, from my perspective, I asked a lot of those questions. What are the unintended consequences? What's the lost time? What are the lost resources? And I feel confident, at least from my perspective, I, you know, the chamber was not able to have a lot of representatives. Obviously, Madonna's here, um, today, but had wanted to, just unfortunately, meetings out of town, you know, conferences, physically not in the city today to be here to represent. But we did ask a lot of those questions, and that was one of the big perspectives that we wanted to know. How are we protected beyond just the jobs and all the fun and diversity and whatever else it can bring in the money? What is that long-run perspective would like, and then what are we reinvesting back past those initial jobs?
All right, Wade, in response to your?
The Chamber of Commerce. We've already talked to, you know, Hood County, Ron Massingale. We're already in the works for a bridge to be coming across the river on South End of Land Base. All the growth would be between here and Lynnroes.
Oh, come on, real quick. Pace is about running out.
But if you put solar panels right there south of the river, there's nothing, all that growth between here and Lynnroes. Have you looked at that?
That is not something we've looked at.
Well, that's something, you know, you consider your, the impact of future growth for Lynnroes, this will kill.
You're good. You're good. Right quick, Ms. Highsmith, right quick. You bet. Very briefly.
Judge James, you asked to hear people from Grant, or from Lynnroes.
Yes.
I lived here for five years, and I moved out, but I came back specifically for this.
You bet. And I was going to ask, Sarah, I was going to put a bunch of them on the spot since Wade made that comment. Go ahead, Ms. Highsmith.
All right, I'm John Highsmith, DuPont Plantation. And I really wanted to bring up, getting away from some of these details that draw so many arguments back and forth, just an overall question that I just wanted to address to the court. And that is, I wanted to take an example from my past and just use it to illustrate one of the big things I think the court really needs to look into, to consider. And I'd like to talk to you about, um, something that happened years ago in Houston, Texas, when I was involved with a company that cleaned rail cars. And my company received a phone call one day from DuPont Chemical about cleaning antiphenic, phenyl chloride rail cars. And the sales staff knew material was a bad actor, so they quoted ten thousand dollars per car. The rationale they used was that, well, gee, it's three times the average price we get for rail cars. But we started really looking into what was involved, and then we started looking into what we were giving up by doing this. And we had to change the price. We changed it to a hundred thousand per car, from ten thousand per car. And of course, DuPont requested my presence in Wilmington, Delaware. So I went to Delaware from, uh, from Houston, encountered a room of very concerned individuals, and the DuPont person asked me to explain how we could go from ten thousand to a hundred thousand. And I had the explanation, which I really want the court to think about. That is, that this material was very dangerous, and we would have to shut down all of our other railcar cleaning operations, along with some other operations in the plant. And our business was very strong at the time, so we had to cover opportunity costs. And DuPont understood, and we ended up cleaning a hundred and thirty of those cars with no issues. And I think this, this example relates to the decision before you because of the, about the tax abatement. And this mega project represents a loss of opportunities for future development in Somerville County. I think that's really the big question here. And it will affect development more than just the land with the solar panels on it, because other development that would be done in that whole area is going to be affected. And then, very briefly, you know growth is coming. Whether you like it or you don't like it, it is going to be here. And I have a statistic, DFW metro population right now is seven point six three seven million. In two thousand, that's in two thousand and twenty census. Projected to reach nine point one three million in two thousand and thirty. So you have this tremendous growth, you know that growth is going to come out of Somerville County. So we have to watch what's ahead of us, not what's in the rearview. And I can keep hearing, talk about what the land used to be or what it has been, blah, blah. But you've got to think about what it might be with development, especially coming out from that Dallas area. And you have houses paying property taxes, have other development going in along with the houses. So that whole region, you cannot look at it as of what it's been or what it's like today. You have to think about what it could be in the future. And my point is, this project will adversely affect that, and you need to take that into account.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. All right, since Wade asked, asked the question, I'll put you all on the spot. All right, Chamber of Commerce and business owners in support of it. Chip, what do you think?
Uh, I, I actually, Chip Jocelyn, newly retired mayor pro temp. I actually have a question for the court. So how long is this project going to be there? Well, I want that, I want you guys to answer that because you're giving tax abatements.
Twenty-five to thirty years, depending on lifetime, you can't determine technology today. Technology tomorrow, next five, ten years is going to change, uh?
So right now they're thinking twenty-five to thirty years?
Twenty-five, thirty years, yes.
And then how long do the panels last?
Supposedly twenty-five to thirty years.
Each?
More, she's twenty-five, thirty years.
But my question is, are you for the, the solar farm itself or solar project?
I don't, I don't think I have enough information, Judge.
All right, how about you, Tamra?
This is the first I've heard of it, Danny.
Wow, we've had it in court here many, many times, many times. All right, young lady, how about you?
So you have to kind of understand my knowledge is, actually, I'm not, I'm not a stand. I'm a worst behavioral specialist. I also work with, I'm a wildlife preserver. So I actually do a lot of work with all sorts of animals. And I have more concerns about questions and stuff for you because fossil ruin is out here. And I do know enough, my father is a rocket scientist. He, he has a lot of information. He worked with NASA. He has written papers for NATO. He's, he understands more of the science of it than I do. And he has concerns, um, specifically about panels and how they affect aircraft. I have more concerns about how it's long-term going to affect animals. Here's the thing, solar became popular, it's been really around in the United States since nineteen fifty-four, but it became popular in two thousand and eight. They also said nuclear energy was safe for a long time. I have a fellow nuclear physicist. And then as the years have gone by, we've learned more about consequences of using nuclear. Nuclear energy was popular before the nuclear bomb. They didn't know that you could take that and turn it into something of mass destruction. So what's to say that there's not repercussions of the same thing with using solar and how it's going to affect groundwater and how it's going to affect population, how it's going to affect animals? We have a, a farm up in Iowa to which there's a farm of, oh, I want to say around a hundred and sixty acres. They have solar on that farm. Since they put solar in, our crops have gone down by twenty-one point three percent. I mean, and we're growing soy and alfalfa. So if it can decrease our, ours by twenty-one percent, what's it going to do to the countries and the continent? What's it going to do to the area with the animals? I mean, if, if, there's a lot of questions based on that. If there was a fire, the particulates that would go into the air could desperately, I mean, very quickly affect the animals at fossil ruin. And those animals, I mean, they're a treasured resource here. I mean, how much do we get from, just from the station of people and the signs in the airports? I have a friend of mine who came to my wedding, and she saw the airport sign, and she was like, no, we have to go fossil ruin. I'm like, God, I go see your ass. So there's questions of, yeah, it, it could be good for the town, but I also have concerns of how is it going to affect the long term.
Okay, how about you, Craig? You for or against?
I just got one last thing to say, and I'm, it's not that I'm, I'm all for the solar and everything, but we got the power plant here. I mean, we're talking about a hundred million dollar project or so, we're talking about. We've seen that fluctuation in their valuation, you know, and?
Want to have B and three B.
You know, so I mean, we've seen that in the past. I mean, we're talking a hundred million, but then we're talking about a fourteen million dollar abatement over six years, give or take. I don't know, I'm just having a hard time with ten jobs, fourteen, that's, that's just my bill. I'm all for the solar, I'm not against it, it's just, I don't think the numbers work out for me on my side.
All right, so what does the court want to do here today? You want to do further research before you do anything, or you wanting to further make it?
Yeah, there's a lot more influential areas to be careful about.
Here's where the attorneys need to advise me. When they do their research, do I need to do the thirty-day advertisement again and notify?
Before you enter into an agreement?
Okay.
You have to go through the notice process in chapter three twelve. Maybe Scott has a different, uh, thought on that, but my reading is that we would just have to schedule it again?
Cool. And I just notify all the entities and then do the thirty-day, just, just like we did this time?
If we don't act today, then we'll have to re-notice.
And I get the feeling that you all don't want to act today.
Judge, I'd like to look at it a little bit more extensively in, in the sense that, you know, we're all elected and we represent Somerville County.
There you go.
And we represented our, represent our folks in Somerville County. What's best for Somerville County environmentally as well as financially.
Yep.
And I don't want to enter into that or, or make a vote on that agreement without personally some more information that.
And you've got all these, you've got all these folks' phone numbers on both sides.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask them.
Judge, I have a question for Mr. Massey, one of the major landowners over there. Do you, I have talked to other, uh, in the wind industry, and their royalty checks have decreased significantly, if any at all. And so they're having to pursue civil litigation to receive their royalties. And I read other publications where that same has happened, that it's kind of like an LLC shell game. And they can bankrupt one, move on to the next one, and it's hard, working with some of the large utilities and different entities, to get responses for their royalty payments as they decrease and become non-existent.
Well, I'm certainly saying, I'm not personally an, an owner over there. I want to clarify that. That would be nice, but I'm not. I manage it for my late father because I got, uh, given that title as the, the manager. My grandfather owns it, and some other folks. And if we end up having issues like that, obviously, then maybe in court I have to deal with that. My attorney's not here, but I imagine he'd have a real good answer for that. But we've had plenty of problems with utility companies, oil and gas companies. And I don't know what comparisons are with those kind of numbers, tax abatements, what those things do for the community versus what solar does. But, uh, uh, on my end, uh, we'll keep an eye on that. We, we would like them to pay what they're supposed to pay, as well as do all the things that they say they're going to do to preserve the land and follow all the regulations. And so far, we have all the confidence they will do that. Yeah, we, we've had, we've had issues, not with renewable energy projects before, but we've had issues with other things. And I imagine my attorney would address that if it came up and we, you know, try to make sure.
And we're probably getting out of the realm of our concern.
Yep.
That's between, yeah, law firms, lawyers, landowners, that's none of our concern.
Well, one last question. I've been confused. You know, now that Osaka is in Japan and European Energy is in Denmark, and they're hiding behind the Texas LLC, if they bankrupt that LLC and decide this project is not profitable for Somerville and Hood Counties, who has to do the cleanup? Does that default to the taxpayers? That's my concern too, is you've got an entity in Japan, you have an entity in Denmark, and LLC can bankrupt itself and just get back on an airplane and fly home. So what are we left with?
Answer that question. That's the last question, and then we're going to adjourn this meeting.
So to build a solar project, there's, there's going to be somebody like a large bank in the United States is going to want money. And so, so those banks have a team of lawyers and experts who only invest a hundred or two hundred or a hundred and fifty million dollars if they're certain that they can, A, the, the project is going to make money, B, it's going to pay back the loan, and C, that they have all the requisite protections to make sure that, that facility keeps operating. And before any LLC or any company could take that project into bankruptcy, the lender's going to take over. And since the lender has hundreds of millions of dollars invested in it, they're going to get someone else to run it. And so that solar farm is going to operate for the next twenty-five years. So there's, while you may not understand that, that's how the business works. And I've, I've been in contact with lawyers in New York, I've been working on these projects for ten or fifteen years, and no, no bank, they're not going to see a JP Morgan or a Citibank loaning money to a project that isn't going to operate. Why? Because they have shareholders and they're loaning the money. They're going to make sure it operates. And so I think the short answer is, the lender's going to make sure it's built right, operates properly. If it doesn't, they'll take it back and either sell it or get another operator to come and operate it for them. And, and the, the lease provides for that. I drafted those leases. We'll be dealing with lenders, you know, these people are very sophisticated, they'll make sure it operates properly. They'll also make sure that the company operates in compliance with environmental laws. If you've ever read the thirty or forty or a hundred-page loan documents, there's a huge section there that says you will comply with all environmental laws. And so that's also in the agreement with the landowners and the leases. I, I don't see the risk.
And my understanding is, what, Chip?
Just quickly, um, you know, most of our citizens are probably at work. So if you want more citizens here, then I would suggest to, to these gentlemen and ladies that they have some type of form at night, or sometime in the evening, to where, uh, people can be heard and people can ask questions. And people that didn't get the notice from the court or whatever can, can have, you know, a, a discussion with, with these people to, to get their questions answered.
All right, and it's my understanding that you all don't want to take any action here today at all. So you want to do further research, and you got to let me know when to advertise thirty-day ahead to put it back to the public. And then if you have any public forms, whatever you want to do, however you want to handle it, you just got to let me and the attorneys know so we can work it out. So do I have a motion to adjourn this particular special session in Somerville County's court? I have a motion by Tammy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jeff. All in favor, say motion. That's five for, zero against.